It started here just a moment. I just want to say this one more time. People are still joining us. But Jake, could you hear me? All right, one last time and then we'll get started. Jake, Jake Kerth, could you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Great. So now we have all the presenters that are here. And can we see you too Jake? Do you have your camera up or not yet?
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You don't have to have it up all night, just when you're ready to.
There we go. Hi, guys.
Okay. All right, it's 6:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we'll probably see a few more people joining us as they do, I will admit them. This is our October 27th meeting. It's actually our November meeting. But because of the elections and COVID-19, we're holding it early. It's actually an abbreviated meeting. And I want to thank Vicki and Chris and Liz and Tim and all of the people that are helping with the voting. So it's a big day for us. With that, I'm going to call this to order and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Which stands one nation, God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion on any actions for the agenda tonight for the consent agenda? Well, actually, I would.
I would move that we approve the agenda, but not necessarily in that order, Don.
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
I'll second it. Ken.
Okay, for the board, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Consent agenda, do I hear a motion for that? Or does anyone want an item pulled from the consent agenda?
I have nothing.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, so moved.
Second, I'll second it. Tim, I'll second it.
Tim, there's been a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion's carried. All right, committee reports. We might as well. Fire has not met?
Nope.
Okay, library?
Nothing new on the library.
All right. Wisconsin towns associations, we met via Zoom and in person last Thursday evening. And it was within a half an hour of the debate, so I've never seen a meeting that ended in a half an hour, but it did. I think we set, I think we set a new record. It was unbelievable. No, no updates that I have of anything. We're always talking roads, talking snow, all of those types of things. EMS, anything to report on EMS? I guess I'm the EMS guy there too. We reported on that at our last October 6th meeting, so nothing is new there. The chairman's report road update is, you know, from looking outside, we had our first major snowfall. We handled that very well. We had three trucks out at four o'clock in the morning. Because the ground wasn't frozen, we had quite a few complaints of lawns and sod and mailboxes that got damaged. But I think we've taken care of all of those. We did hold our budget workshop on October 14th. We're going to have our formal one on November 10th. And we picked out all of our roads to be major reconstruction roads for next year and the ones that need to be repaired. I know we, I know we have a lot of visitors here that are joining us perhaps from not from the town, and that's fine. I just want everyone to know that we do not have a public hearing scheduled tonight, so the presenters can present and whatever's taken after that, then it will be a board discussion. But this is open for public comment if someone wanted to speak or keep, make us aware of something for a minute. Anyone have anything to say in public comment?
Yeah, Don, Rod, excuse me, Rod Cook here. If I, if I get a couple minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And so Don and I actually been talking about this topic for some time, so I'll try to be as brief as I can, but wanted to make sure that, had the opportunity to share with the board some concerns we were having in our neighborhood. Again, my name's Rod Cook, been in the Hudson township for about 10 years now. And we live about two miles directly west of Twin Lakes. And the reason I'm mentioning Twin Lakes, you'll understand here in a minute. About three years ago, we started to notice increasing water levels in our neighborhood, and there were levels that we never experienced before. Within the past three years, the water has risen so high that one family in our neighborhood across the street from us has already vacated their home. And if the water continues to increase at the rate it is, we're likely going to be forced from our home this coming year. So since April, we've been researching the cause of this. And in addition, this past summer, ourselves along with two neighbors hired an engineer and a pumping company to move water off of our properties just to try to stay in our homes. The engineer that we hired estimated that we moved over 4 million gallons of water from our properties. And within three days of stopping that pumping exercise, about 3 million gallons of water came back. And it all came back from under the ground. And we had no measurable rainfall during that period of time that we were pumping. So in short, we've proven that the issue is a groundwater table issue. Some have suggested the high groundwater table is due solely to increased precipitation that we've been, we've been experiencing reduced evaporation due to high humidity over the past few years. That, that is clearly contributing to some of the issues that we're having. However, we now have data that supports that the precipitation may not be the only contributor. And just a few weeks back, S E H, an engineering firm that was hired by the village of Roberts and the town of Warren, confirmed that the wastewater treatment plan in Roberts is raising the level of Twin Lakes by six inches every year. In the past 10 years, Twin Lakes has risen 150% in terms of lake level. Unfortunately, the way this was shared via S E H and in the report, and I know Don has read the report and has have many others, is this create a lot of confusion in our community. The report states that the treatment plan is adding 17% of the total volume going into Twin Lakes. That doesn't sound like much, but what, what is in the report that they're not shared, that hasn't been clearly shared is 17% equals that six inches of lake rise each year. So we now have proof from an accredited engineering firm that the wastewater treatment plant is adding six inches a year to the Twin Lakes. And the fact that the lakes would not be rising if they stopped doing that, and the homes wouldn't be flooding that are flooding over there. Why am I mentioning Twin Lakes? Because our research and data shows that there's a possibility, we do not have proof, but there's a possibility that what's happening over at the wastewater treatment plant in Roberts is affecting us here in Hudson. Groundwater flows from east to west and southwest in our area. And at the October Village of Roberts Town Hall meeting, we asked the village board if Hudson could be represented on their Twin Lakes joint committee. This is a committee that was created specifically to address the high water issues that are occurring in that area. So my question to the board is, is the board willing to consider assigning a member to join that committee to help us protect the township of Hudson?
I guess I would just like to add, thank you, Rod, for your comments. You're also, we're having you on the December.
Correct.
Agenda. If, if there's something that you could send us on that to take a look at, I think we can.
Oh, my gosh.
In addition.
Someone has to mute their, their video at their microphone.
Yeah, Don, absolutely. I absolutely can. I'll get you some more details on that in prep for that December meeting. In addition to that, if you haven't already, it might be helpful to share that document that I sent to you. It captures all the facts to the board, so the board can come prepared to that discussion as well.
Can I ask a question of Rod?
You bet, Tim.
I don't have a problem with it. And then Rod, I've read a lot of those reports. And I don't have any problem. What, what do you feel the board would benefit and the community would benefit by putting a town board representative on the committee?
Yeah, excellent question. The thought there, Tim, is, is one, awareness and engagement in regards to what's happening directly east of us. And really helping us understand and support the village and the town of Warren to find resolution to the issue with wastewater treatment plant. Meaning that town Willard and Gino have really struggled getting help from the D N R to engage and to really go attack this just so we can stop, you know, displacing people from their homes. And so the thought is a connection with the township of Hudson, knowing that it is again possible the things we're starting to see here are a result of or contributed result of what's happening there. That the board, the township can stand up and say, whoa, you guys got some problems over there. We want to help you solve this, but we want to make sure you're solving it so that more of our residents don't get affected. You know, we've had lots of concerns here in regards to home property values and taxes. In fact, my neighbor, again, already has moved out and reducing the price on their home just to see if they can move it type thing. That's going to continue to happen with folks even here, Hillary Farms, if this current state continues. So we, we think from a value, a property value perspective, there could be a significant impact here. That's why we're hoping maybe a rep from Hudson can engage and help us through this process.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Rod. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing done. We're going to move to item number seven, final plat for Summer Prairie second edition. And Ed, I see you're here. Maybe you'd like to present that.
Yeah, so the second edition is 18 single family lots. There are no, no two family lots on this portion of the subdivision. The 18 lots equal 46.3 acres with a 2.57 acre average. Road construction.
What's that? What was the number? What was the number on the average?
2.57.
Okay, yes, I thought it was. Okay.
Yep. And I gave Vicki earlier the, the numbers for the road lengths and everything. And when I submitted it, I also gave an engineering plan for Tim for the signs, signage that would be needed during this portion of the development. We were, we're hoping to submit to Sacred County here next Monday. But it all depends on if, if the road guy has his portion done and enough time for ACA to get the record drives completed. If not, we'll be pushed back a month submitting to Sacred County. So we've got the soil test done and everything. And we've received comments back from the county in regards to the engineering for this portion of the road and everything. And, and comments have, and we've responded to those ACA has. So we're, I think we're pretty, pretty well here. Any questions from, from anyone?
Questions from the board? Stormwater on 26 and 27, that whole pond down in there, Ed, we knew was going to be an issue when we first looked at the concept.
Yeah.
And that the lots are going to remain that size. Is there adequate building space and things for, just with Rod Cook's comments, that we aren't going to have long-term problems down the road?
Yeah, because I mean, the engineering would have been done for, I think they actually do a double back 100-year storm event on the, on these now. But yeah, but we have the contiguous buildable area large enough for the septic, you know, the contiguous buildable area excludes the area for the septic system because that can't be included in your, in your computing of that C V A. Because it's, so it's larger than, than that. So, yep.
Okay. Okay. Are Waxons able to get in there now that I looked at that yesterday or Monday? Honest. You cut him off.
Yeah, I hope so. I, I hope the road builder left him a lane to get in there. So, so yeah, so that's one thing. So once we get this plat through the county and recorded, then we can get Bob back his, his lot with his house. And then he's also having, he'll retain lot 30 also.
I saw that. Yeah, Bob went to Joe Ayers, wanted a new fire number. I thought, well, he's ahead of the curve.
He's jumping a little bit.
Ahead of the curve.
Yeah, yep. Oh, yeah, I'm sure he's probably, yeah, I'm sure he's chomping at the bit to get everything settled out there. So.
That was the only questions I had.
Okay.
Okay. So lot, just in that regard, so where the driveway is now shown over lot 32, that obviously will go away and lot, lot 30 will have access to, is it Magoo Trail?
Mojo Trail.
Mojo, yeah.
Lot 30 would be Mojo Trail, yeah.
Trail is too small of writing for me. All right.
Hopefully Mother Nature cooperates the next couple of weeks so we can get this wrapped up here in a timely fashion.
So.
Okay.
Any other question from the board members? Do I hear a motion to approve this plat?
Yes. Yes. I saw move. We approved the final plat of Summer Prairie second edition, a major subdivision for Urchins LLC located in the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter, in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, and in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section 35 Township 29 North, Range 19 West, town of Hudson, Sacred County, Wisconsin, including part of lot one and two of C S M, recorded in volume 29, page 6614, document 1077822. This is consisting of 18 lots totaling 46.3 acres excluding the low road. The lot numbers on the plat shown is lot 15 through 32 with an average of 2.57 acres. The following conditions, plat review fees at a rate of $350 totaling $6,300 to be paid to the town of Hudson. Road signs totaling 4,300 to be paid by the developer, which includes four stop signs, four street signs, two speed limit signs, and two children at plain sites, plus any cost of any other signs deemed necessary. I'm going to, I got it down in 14, Ed. I'm going to put it up here now. The developer should put a road closed sign for construction traffic only on the west end of Mojo Trail leading to the Summer Prairie third edition during this next phase till it's open. I don't want Dirkie putting red arrows down there on the end, and then your construction workers are trying to get in there. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I just put up a barricade. I noticed that they did that, they just put a big sign up down on Moon Glow when they did Hidden Waters. I like that. It kept people out of there.
Yeah.
So then the number three blacktop is to be completed with a compacted thickness of three inches done and two lifts within one year of today. Work not completed requiring extension request to the town board and irrevocable standby letter of credit for a period of not less than two years in the amount of $112,586 based on $41 per foot, which includes shouldering, and must be given to the town for 2,746 feet of roadway to be named Magoo Road and Mojo Trail and Griffin Lane. The developer shall pay $50 to town of Hudson to cover the cost of acquiring registered copies of the final plat. Five, this subdivision is also subject to the approval process of Saint Craig County Community Development Department. Number six, the developer shall pay a fee of $300 to cover the cost of Saint Craig County blacktop inspection. Seven, the town shall be provided with a blanket easement to provide inspection maintenance and repair to the retention ponds, drainage ways, and culverts within the subdivision as required. The final plat approval, the developer will provide the town with a copy of the preliminary plat with which you did and county approved, including this design for signage. Nine, the developer shall pay the town $125 per lot, a total of $2,250 to the town for administrative stormwater maintenance fees. Ten, the developer shall remove any previously existing field accesses or driveways not going to be used. Eleven, classification of all roads in the subdivision shall be set as Class E highways. Twelve, final plat approval contingent upon all fees being paid within one year of the final plat approval. And 12, the 13 is the fire number and house numbers are $60 each for a total of $1,080. That's it. That's my motion.
Tim, you got to fix, Tim, you got to fix your motion. You said number 12, you said within one year. It should be one week.
Oh, sorry, one week. Yes, you're right. Misread it. Sorry. Okay, do I hear a second to that? Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that. Ken.
Okay, a motion's been made, it's been seconded. Vicki or Tim or anyone else, are there any other changes or, or refinements that we should do to this motion before I ask for the vote?
Um, number 13, I got printed out here that the fire and house number were $60 a lot totaling $1,200. That was the printout I got, but.
Ed. I can't use my.
I might have my numbers wrong, so.
1,200 would be 20 lots. 1,200 was, 1,200 is what we charged for Hidden Waters when there was 20 lots. This is, this is only 18 lots. The two outlets don't get fire numbers.
Okay.
In most cases.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other, any other questions or discussions? Hearing, hearing none, those in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. We got all the fire numbers up in, in first edition yesterday, Ed.
Oh, perfect. Great.
All the fire numbers are up now.
Great, great. And then, all right, sounds good. Appreciate it. And then if Vicki can email me that information from that, then I can get that on the deck and get everybody's money out to them.
I will send you an email tomorrow, Ed.
Perfect, thank you. And, and then Don, if I can get you to sign a copy of that plat at some point, then I'll just pick it up at the town hall.
Please, yes, just, just give me a call, Ed, and we'll, we'll find a time.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it. Okay, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
Bye.
Okay, next we have a concept presentation plan for a possible future use of land in the northwest quadrant of I-94 and Highway 12. And I asked Jake Kerth from Scannell Properties to join us tonight. I mentioned to him that it's easier for us as a board to talk in conceptual planning stages. We won't take any action on it. But then Jake and his firm can get a sense as to what our wishes are before they expend tremendous amounts of engineering and, and personal time on it. So with that, Jake, it's your, it's your item and your presentation.
Thank you all. Mr. Chairman, Don Jordan, thank you, and also the rest of the members. Thank you for having me on. If I can, I will share my screen. I won't spend too much time about me or my company, but more online, the concept. And I want to hear your guys' thoughts, if any. So let me share my screen. Oh, it says, sorry, Don, it says host disabled participation screen sharing. I don't need to share my screen if you guys had a printout or not, but.
Let me just see if I could find you here real quick. Which one you're looking at, Jake? The one with the buildings?
I will be, yes, well, I, I will start at the site location map and then go down to slide number 12, which is the conceptual master plan.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Perfect, perfect. Well, then we'll just go from there, so I won't take up too much more of your time. But once again, guys, my name's Jake Kerth. I'm with Scannell Properties based out of Minneapolis, actually based out of Wayzata. A little bit of background about my firm is we have eight locations, eight in the United States and then three overseas. We're a 30-year-old company. We're actually celebrating our 30th year anniversary this year. So we are primarily a light industrial real estate developer, but we do everything from multifamily to flex office to light industrial manufacturing. What I want to talk with you guys about today, or at least this evening, is I've recently put under contract plus or minus 65 acres right off I-94 and Highway 12. What I've drawn out today, which is pure conceptual, are four buildings. They're all single load buildings. Our target market is light industrial users where there might be 10,000 square feet of office to every, you know, 50,000 square feet of warehouse space. With that being said is, is I want to have a conceptual plan, or I wanted to have a conceptual conversation with you guys regarding your guys' temperature take. Currently, this land is not zoned industrial. I believe if I'm not mistaken, it's zoned more residential. But I wanted to see what your guys' thoughts, thoughts are before we, you know, dive into anything further regarding, you know, us expending dollars and time. So I'm, I'm happy to field any questions whatsoever, but you know, I thought it'd be great to have a workshop conversation with you guys.
Jake, I know, I know we're somewhat constrained by not having your graphics up for the rest of the participants tonight, but that's kind of the vagaries of a Zoom meeting. But one thing the board members did see is some, some of your clients are quite impressive that I, I saw from Nestle's to Amazon to you name it. Could, could you brief the board on that a little bit more? And then to share with us how many buildings you'd be looking at and a little bit further as to how you happen to choose that site?
Yeah, precisely. So one of our clients on a national basis told us that they wanted to be in Hudson. The city of Hudson, around Hudson, and this site, we've actually pinged around with before about a couple of years ago. We just never put it under contract. Let me take a step back. We do built-to-suit requirements across the country for a number of different users. With that being said is, is we also do a lot of speculative development across the country. City of Hudson, we have not done that, or the town of Hudson, we have not done that to date, at least to my understanding. What brought me here to begin with is I've always thought it was a great site. The visibility, the access, and the location, the proximity to I-94 is unparalleled like nothing else. You know, if, if I look at least at a Google map or an aerial, a lot of the industrial development to date is within the city of Hudson, located, I'm blanking on the road names, but located, you know, right off Hanley Road. And the vacancy rate down there is, is sub 3%. So we are very, very bullish with the fact that there would be a number of different users that could produce, you know, great, high well-paying jobs, bring economic benefit to the town of Hudson outside of just the clients that I listed within the presentation.
I also know one of the things that we always talk to potential clients about is obviously with your due diligence, you, you know that that is not on sewer and water today. So you'd have to make arrangements for your, for your septic and your well water.
Yep, and we've had preliminary conversations. I believe Vicki, I believe I spoke with her and also Don with, with you as well. We have a great relationship with a general contractor, and we've gotten some preliminary pricing. So we understand that it is on well and septic, you know, depending upon pricing and the client. If the numbers pencil and they work, but yes, we do understand. You know, depending upon pricing and the client, if the numbers pencil and they work, but yes, we do understand.
And, and for the board, Jake, I know sixty-five acres is a lot of property to, to absorb. Are you, are you looking at, as you've looked through our ordinance, have you arrived at a zoning overlay that you're the most comfortable with, or is that something you're still exploring?
I like to say that we're still exploring, but, you know, where we would go with this is we would want to go with light industrial.
Light industrial, okay.
Light industrial, yep. So, we're not, I'm not looking to do any smoke stacks or heavy manufacturing or anything like that. So, yeah, it'd be light, light industrial use.
And for the board, you know, when, when Jake and Scannel Properties approached me as the chair, I, I felt was best for them to come in and talk to us, as I mentioned, informally, but then we, we as a board, based on our discussions tonight, would have to decide if we want to pursue rezoning the property. We do know that a lot of our land has been held in a residential as a zoning classification, and that does get rezoned from time to time. So with that, can we open it up to the board members? I, I know I've sent you all the packets in the background, but please feel free to ask Jake any questions you might have.
Yeah, I guess I got a couple of questions. So, you have some examples in your, in your email that came out. And I expect that it's the same as the presentation that you were going to do of essentially warehouse distribution clients and, you know, their setups. So is that, is, is that essentially what you're looking at, you know, for these four buildings?
Yep, 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 absolutely, yep. And throughout my conceptual plan, I mean, we kind of joke around on a day-to-day basis with this. When I draw up these conceptual plans, you know, I say, great, it looks great, but what we find often is that that's actually what you're not going to end up building, because we might get a phone call tomorrow that says there might be a different requirement. So, as, 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 as I've slated it today, the goal would be to put four light industrial buildings with, you know, what, 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 what you see as far as examples that has been distributed. Um, I think, I think that one thing I want to preface is that these are not, you know, metal buildings. These are state-of-the-art, Class A industrial buildings that look, look classy, and we would be for sure willing to work with the standard and the level that, that, that you would wish for those buildings to look like. So as far as landscaping is, as far as landscaping and architecture, we would be willing to work with you guys in any shape or form.
Okay, great, yeah. So, so there's, as far as concerns, any concerns about noise, light pollution, anything like that, that's pretty fairly minimal, it sounds like?
Right, yeah, and we would for sure run, run, run studies as well. So I know that with, with, with certain clients, they or at least certain cities, the fact that, you know, we are close to some residential, especially on the north side, and a little bit on the west side, that we would, you know, want to be cognizant of that, and we understand that that will probably raise a concern. So we'll want to make sure that all tests, and we can, you know, transition the lighting and we can put berms up to shield noise if need be, so. Yeah.
Ken, Susan, Tim, did you have questions?
I do, there's all, there is the concern as far as the traffic. Have you? I didn't see how you were going to deal with the traffic as far as coming in, because right now the county is not going to let you come in off from Highway 12 going north. You would have to go.
Coming off of rodeo, isn't it?
It'd have to go.
Comes in off of rodeo.
Coming off from, going east towards Roberts, they'd have to come in off from 12 there, not.
On rodeo, on rodeo drive. That's where he shows it, Susan.
Correct.
No, no.
Yeah, so we would, we would, we would run a, we would run a traffic study, and we are assuming that there had to be some off-site road infrastructure that would be needed to be put in place. And it's nothing that we haven't ever done before, willing to work with you guys on how we, we would structure that. But as far as traffic flow, you know, if I just scroll up and I look at, you know, one of the, one of the, I'm, I'm on Google Earth on, on, on mine, but there's an industrial site that's located off Bear Road, that's on the north side of town. I can't imagine, I mean, if, I can't imagine, you know, watching trucks, you know, pass through the neighbors, or if you go north on 12, there's, there's, there's other land. I guess what I'm saying is, is there's, there's direct access where from the site, they would go, you know, east on rodeo and then they'd immediately go right to the interstate. So, we wouldn't be weaving through I mean, any streets whatsoever.
Tim, Tim, Ken? The only concern I have is it's a hole. And when I look at your four buildings, honest to goodness, I don't see the stormwater in it. You know what I mean? That concerns me. And I, I understand this sewer and water, you're going to have to look at that, but it's already a hole, which meant you're going to have to, there's water running into it, and they're not supposed to let anymore run into it than it is, but you're going to create a lot of non-permeable surface in there that you're going to have to absorb the water that's just already in this hole. You know what I mean?
Right.
And plus, you're going to create more running there. I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm okay with the concept of commercial light industrial, I am. It's just that it's in a hole.
Right, yeah, and, 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 um, and, sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off, but, you know, that's part of, that's, that's, Tim, you, I think, I think both you and Don have hit the nail on the head. First and foremost, we understand that well and septic is probably and will be how we serve. Two is, yes, the stormwater. And with that being said is, is I purposely have not programmed for that because that's part of my due diligence. There's a lot of topography that needs to go in, I don't know if you guys, the site is, I mean, the ondulations are, I mean, it's, it's, it's astronomical. So there's a lot of earthwork that needs to happen, and when that earthwork is being done, then that's exactly when, when, when we put the stormwater ponding basins in, so, yeah.
And if you start moving all that dirt, doesn't this, the sewer and water, those sewer then become a problem because you've, you've changed the soil makeup? It's no longer natural soil for percolation? Do you know what I mean?
Kind of.
So maybe the level all over, you know what I mean? You may end up with a lot of mound systems or something, or alternative sewer systems. You know?
Right, and I, yeah, and I think my best answer for that is, is I'm not trying to be the smartest guy in the room, with that being said is, is we hire wonderful consultants that would make sure that we're covered on all bases. So, that's, that's a hundred percent in consideration at all times. So, yeah, and that's part of our due diligence process.
And, and I'm okay, Don, with changing the zoning on it, but remember, Jeff always resisted changing the comp plan, but you felt that we should, if we're going to change the zoning, we got to change the comp plan too. You know what I mean? Yeah, I, I think, I, I want to hear everybody's comments before I give mine, but that's why I wanted to have Jake here tonight. You know, if, if, if we as a board and a town decided to pursue this, there's several steps we need to do, not only the comp, comp plan, but also rezoning it, but neither of which are insurmountable.
I speak once.
Ken?
Jake, it's Ken. I, I think, I think it's a great place for a development like that. It appears to be far enough from all the neighborhoods on the, on the north and to the, to the west. I was, most of my comment, most of those guys' comments got answered by you, and that, I mean, that's what I was going to ask. The stormwater, I think, if maybe one of them buildings was downsized a little bit, and you got more creative with reclaiming groundwater, or you know, there's, there's, there's ways to reclaim roof water that comes off the roofs, flat roofs of them buildings. You know, I, I think ways to get around some of that stormwater issue. I, I wasn't going to ask you, how many different companies are you thinking of having in there? Just one, one or two, or one main one, and?
You know, that's, that, that's a really good question, you know. Let's just say it, uh, let's just see the first building. The first building is slated to be plus or minus two hundred and ten thousand square feet. It could be made up of three tenants, four tenants, one tenant, two tenants, just in one building. You know, I don't know what the market holds tomorrow, but, you know, we, we feel extremely bullish that there's a ton of activity in this area, and we feel it's a diamond in the rough that could bring a, a number of different uses. So, no, we don't have just one tenant slated for the whole entire thing. The way we envisioned it is that we would build the first building with a tenant in tow, which we've already had interest. I can't say who, just because we're under an NDA, but they're looking to, they would, they would be looking to kick off the first building and take about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So, there's a ton of activity, but I can't give you a definitive answer as far as how many tenants would be inside.
I think it's a great location for that, and I know with the city of Hudson, they're running out of light industrial. And, you know, I, I just think it's a good location right off 94 there. And I'm not always all for building homes next to 94 either, so I think that's a great, great location for it. It's my thoughts.
I, I just, oh, if I could, I, I think kind of leading into your comment though, Tim, I think that you know, this, and I guess the question is, is there is that pond that's right at the bottom of one of the, the three north-south buildings, the short one. And I'm, I'm, I expect that that's probably the lowest spot, and it might end up, might end up being a lot bigger, you know, in order to accommodate, you know, the runoff, and then you're kind of bumping up against the neighborhood, you know, towards the north. So, I guess, you know, is there, you know, can you still make it work if, 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 if essentially you had to shrink down, you know, your footprint?
Right, yeah. You know, I think yes, and quite frankly, we're going to have to do what we have to do in order to make the buildings, you know, work. So if we now have, you know, a, a larger ponding basin for the stormwater, well, then that's just the case, and we have to do it. So, that'll come through our due diligence period. Yeah.
I, I only have one more comment, is I don't really like the one-way in and one-way out. You know, if there's a way to connect a road on the back on the north, northwest side of that, or
Yeah.
You know, a gated road or something, so that.
Right.
That's frontage road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
That's, that's a great, the property line does not go, it does not connect to frontage road, so there could be some sort of access agreement that maybe we could work in conjunction to put that in. But yeah, that would, that would be great. I mean, yeah, absolutely, having two access points would be great.
At least be able to loop into that development right on the corner there with the
Right.
With the restaurant there, or something. There's got to, there's got to be a way to do something, so we have two ways, one way in, two ways in and out.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that that point brings up a lot of, I mean, I think that point brings a good point up is, is, you know, and that goes back to the, uh, traffic flow. And so having flow in and out, I mean, does a stoplight get put there at rodeo and Highway 12? That'll come from the study, so.
I think about emergency vehicles too, I mean, being able to get in. If you only have one, one way into there, and something happens, and emergency vehicles can't get back in there, you know, that's always a concern.
Yes, yep, that's, that's good. I will, yep, that's a good idea.
Something to think about.
Any other comments?
The only.
Yeah, the only other comment I have, Don, and this doesn't have as much to do with you, Jake, as it has to do with the town board. When we were considering putting a sand pit in there with total excavating to remove all that sand, I ended up talking to several residents along Aldro and Crosby. They were quite concerned about looking at all that excavation equipment, turning that into a gravel pit, if you will. I agree with, with Jake's comments, and they're a very professional-looking building. Most of those people will be looking at those rooftops, which I don't think is as offensive of a situation, but you'll still have to sell the concept to the residents around it. That's my only comment. Okay.
Doing nothing.
I, I just, I just wanted to share my comments as, as one of the people on the board. I, I think this site, to echo Jake's earlier comment, you know, is has excellent access to I-94 and Highway 12. You know, it's been sitting there for years waiting for the, the right user to come along. I think its highest and best use is for something other than residential use. I do think bringing jobs to the town and continuing to look at economic development is a task that we should be looking at as board members. And, yes, it was looked at as a, as a sand borrow pit at one time, as Tim mentioned, but then ultimately the use was, after all, the sand was removed and the pit was done, they were supposed to slope the sides and have that as a, as a business park. So I, I think those are all in keeping with the discussions that have been held in the past. I guess the question for us tonight is if we, as a board, want to move ahead with looking at holding public hearings, and I, I don't have all the answers here tonight either. We, I know it would have to be rezoned. Vicky or Tim, do we, do we know, do we have to amend the comp plan prior to that, or can we do that at the same time? Or ma- maybe we don't know that tonight. Do you know Liz?
I believe you can do it at the same time.
Okay.
On the public hearing notification, I do want to just point out that it is probably something that would be reviewed by the city too as an extraterritorial parcel.
Yes, it would be. You're correct. But I think, I think Liz and, well, everyone, I, I think we, we would have to put together a little flow chart or a a Gantt chart as to what the next steps would be for Jake and his company to take, and then we can work, work around a possible solution to that, including public hearings. Is there anyone on the board here tonight that, that's not in favor of moving ahead with this? Okay, and I guess Jake, the only thing I would encourage you is, you know, we've had many looky-loos, for lack, lack of a better description. You know, so we really, really want to make sure that you've got things locked down and legitimate potential prospects before we went through all the hurdles and hoops of amending comp plans and rezoning it, and then something fell through.
Right. I understand.
I don't think there's anything we need to take action on tonight, or that we really can't. It's a concept-only discussion, but anything else from the board on this?
Well, you need to remember, only the owner of the parcel can ask for rezoning, and they have to apply for the rezoning.
Okay, did you hear that, Jake?
Yes, I did.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I, on behalf of the, on behalf, as a chair, I, I want to be encouraged to you, Jake. I've, I've looked over your material, and I've looked over your clients, and you have some outstanding clients. And, you know, obviously, you are, you and your firm are the type of quality buildings and tenants we want to attract to our town. So, I guess I just want to leave you tonight. That seems to me the consensus of the board is that we'd like to to move ahead and see what we can do to, you know, accommodate this change.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for the time. I know, Don, as we spoke over the phone- Uh, I know, Don, uh, as we spoke over the phone a couple of weeks back, that you said only at five minutes. And I'm way overdue. So, thank you very much for all of your guys' input.
Very good. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is tonight is Marion Shaw. Marion asked to, uh, give a presentation on the county disease ordinance that, uh, has been, uh. Being talked about by everyone. So, Marion, are you, are you going to join us just via audio or can we get to see you too?
Uh, it's, it's by audio.
Okay, that, that's fine. At least you're still there and we can hear you. So, that's fine. Would you?
Absolutely.
And for everyone, just to set the tone again, Marion's been really, uh, decent about this. This is not a public hearing on the. Uh, resolution, you know, I, I know that the city had over five hours of testimony. Uh, but Marion asked to be on the agenda. We think it's important. We asked that he could present it and then I'd like to discuss it amongst the board. So, Marion, it's, with that, uh, please give us your presentation.
Okay, and, uh, Don, you asked me to be quick, so I, I will try to do that. There's a few points that I'd like to make. I appreciate the opportunity, of course. Uh, Don, the whole board. Uh, I have been in contact with several people, obviously many, 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 many citizens. Um, I did speak to Sheriff, uh, Knutson this morning. And he concurred with me on, on one thing. And that was in both of our twenty-five years here. Nobody has seen this much citizen activity at the county level. So, this is a dynamic situation. I also would like to point out that this has nothing to do with masks. This is not about masks. It never has been. Uh, my background is that I followed this through the Pierce County systems. I took the opportunity to speak to the Pierce County Board, uh, when they passed this. Um, I was witness to a room full of three hundred people. I was witness to a room full of four hundred people. And there's one common thread out there. And the thread is that nobody is listening to the citizens. And I can illustrate that in a couple of ways. Um, it, just the fact that they have us in, say, Cry County. Running around hours upon hours upon hours, meeting upon meeting upon meeting. It's like a moving target. First they take it off, then they put it back on, then they take it off. Well, guess what? Just last night again, they put it back on again. We don't know what's going on, but there's one thing that's going on. One is they're trying to move fast. And two is we don't know what they're trying to get to, what the end game is. But we do know this. There is a proposed resolution that I'm hoping all five of you have had the opportunity to look at and read. It, it was passed in the town of Saint Joe. And there's a few points in it that are very important. One is, um, and I will quote Catherine McCuttrick at five and a half hour meeting at the city of Hudson. At the common council meeting where people spoke and spoke and spoke for five hours. And at the end, not at the beginning, but at the end. Catherine came up with three things, and this is what she said, and this is close to exact, but it is paraphrasing. Catherine said. These are the legal issues and concerns. These are nothing but facts. Fact one, is there an emergency? Everybody is pointing to, uh, three twenty-three, one-one. As the basis for this. And the basis says declaration by local government. The governing body of any local unit, unit of government may declare by ordinance or resolution. An emergency existing within the local unit of government. Whenever conditions arise by reason of a riot or civil commotion, a disaster, or an imminent threat of a. Disaster that impairs transportation, food, or fuel supplies, medical care, fire, health. Or police protection, or other critical systems of the local unit of government. The period of the emergency shall be limited by the ordinance or resolution until time during which the emergency condition exists or is likely to exist. Well, this ordinance does not do any of that, but the fact is, is there an emergency? And Catherine's. Um, mention to the city was, there is nothing in that description. That says we have an emergency. There is no emergency based on the definition. So, that's a fact. The second thing that she described as a fact was, the Supreme Court has determined, and this is the federal Supreme Court. Factual basis is needed to execute extreme powers. And she said, there is no factual basis that anybody can point to for any of these powers that they're looking to create. And the last one is constitutional. A person's right to care for their self or family may be litigated under the Fourth Amendment. And so what we see is a big hole open up to litigation for this. And now, after talking to the sheriff, HHS, and things that have been said otherwise. We have three branches of government, nobody knowing what each branch is gonna do, but we do know one thing. The legislative branch. The St. Croix County Board is looking to institute an unconstitutional. Law based on an emergency that doesn't exist. That will limit and inhibit our ability to operate under the Constitution of the United States. You have in your resolution. Uh, whereas the county board and enforcement committees and staff could potentially. Be personally legally liable as stated in Title eighteen, section two forty-two of the U.S. Code. And I'd like to just mention that section two forty-two of Title eighteen makes it a crime for any person under color of any law. To will, willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. For the purpose of section two forty-two, acts under cover and law, color of law include acts not only done by federal, state, or local officials. Officials within their lawful authority, but also acts done beyond the bounds of that official's lawful authority. If the acts are done while the official is purporting or pretending to act. In the performance of his or her official duties. Persons acting under the color of law within meeting a statute include police officers, present guards, other law enforcement officials, judges, care providers. Public health facilities and others who are acting as public officials. It is not necessary that a crime be motivated by animus toward the race, color, religion, sex, gender, cap, familial status, or national origin of the victim. So, the offense is punishable by a range of things, including imprisonment up to life. And so that is specifically listed as one of the problems that we have in what St. Croix County is attempting to do. Once again, you noticed I have not mentioned mask in any of this. Um, this should be an indicator on, on the sleight of hand that the county is going after. Um, one is last night, an appeared a special meeting again with no agenda posted for November eleventh. We don't know what that's gonna be. But coincidentally, it was found out. That under the previous information that they provided. They had a specific question. Will this proposed ordinance impact individual rights? And their answer printed on the site was, the intention of this ordinance is not to impact individual rights. It is a safety measure to protect all of us in our, if our voluntary efforts fail to prevent the spread of infections, diseases, and loss of life. Public House has a duty to protect the health and well-being of everyone in St. Croix County, using the least restrictive means necessary. In extreme circumstances, some constitutional rights may be limited. As long as there is strong enough reason to do so, and as long as the measures are implemented in the least restrictive manner possible. That disappeared off the website. So, they know they have run into an obstacle. I'm not sure what else to say other than some of the definitions that I just like to point out. Communicable disease means, and in, you know, put big letters or quotations around this in your mind. Any disease. So, this is not a COVID nineteen issue. This is ongoing forever. And it affects anybody in any city, village, or town. Um, it says outbreak means an unusual aggregation of the events grouped together in a short period of time. And that is just one is considered an outbreak. So, outbreak means just one in that sentence. They go on to say public gathering, and that's any location.
Marion, can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Not only that, but this isn't a temporary ordinance that they're just, they just wanna put on for a temporary situation. This is a permanent ordinance that St. Croix County is, is trying to enact and make a law. And I guess I for one, I'm not, I completely oppose having St. Croix County. An unelected official of St. Croix County come into any of our businesses, restaurants, homes, daycares. And tell them how to run their business when there's, when there isn't an emergency. And by, I, by me saying there's not an emergency right now, the governor says there's an emergency, but he didn't go through the legislature to make that emergency. To create that emergency. He did it, he did it unilaterally by himself with his administration. I for one, I'm.
And this is.
I'm completely opposed to it, and I would like to pass a resolution, um, similar to the, uh, Bill of the St. Joseph. Uh, majority of the people are against this. I watch all those meetings. I watch every one of those meetings. I watch the city meetings. I watch county meetings. I watch the HHS meetings. There's not, there's no support for this, for, uh, these ordinances. There is zero support and they seem dead set on passing them. I, 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 I'm completely opposed to it. Go ahead, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, 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 one second. I, I, I wanna make sure we get this set up tonight. This, this is not a public hearing. I wanna have Marion give his presentation. I, I want to make sure that, uh, we have ample time to discuss it. But before, before you do that, I wanna make sure that we discuss it as the board, board members and ask questions. So, Sarah, Sarah, where do you live?
Um, uh, my township, um, is Troy.
Okay.
St. Croix County.
Then for to- for tonight, I, I'm just restricting this to the town of Hudson, uh, residents.
Okay.
Marion, did you have any other thoughts before I discussed this with the board? I thought you did a good job keeping it.
Well, I didn't, I. Yeah, and I'm sorry, maybe it was long. And really, I'm just trying to point out things specifically from their ordinance that are very troublesome. But Ken hit it right on the, the nail on the head in the fact that we are using emergency powers as a permanent. Quasi-solution to create more unaccountable power to come in. And, and this is not a stretch. They already have these things in place. The question is, do they have more power to do it? And that is to come into homes, to take children's, to break up families, to put end to businesses. This is a devastating situation that nobody will listen to the citizens about. And they just keep moving forward. We need a voice and the town needs to be our voice.
Okay, so, so with that, let, let me, let me bring it back to discussion amongst the board members then. Um. I, I too listened over five hours of, uh, testimony at the city. I think the board members are well versed on what the issues are. As you know, there's, uh, seventy-two counties in the state. Uh, but there's about thirteen hundred towns in the state. Uh, we do have separation of, uh, government. And there's just so much we can do to influence other, other, uh, agencies of government. There is in the packet that the board has, the resolution number twenty twenty dash ten. That was approved by the town of Saint Joe. And that is, I have read both of those. It appears to be verbatim with the. Proposed sample ordinance that Marion had provided in his packet. And it also provided to the city of New Richmond for their review. Uh, I guess as the chair tonight, is if the board members are in agreement on this. I would, I would ask if the board members consider using the template that Saint Joe has done. Which tracks all of the discussions that Marion has presented and in all of these public meetings. And if it's the wishes of the board to proceed, uh, which I support, so there's no, I don't have to always speak last. Then I think we can use this as a template to let the county know that on behalf of the town. And our nine thousand residents, that this is why we're sending this on. So, with that, I, I want to discuss that amongst the board members. Ken, you shared your thoughts early on. You can certainly speak again, but, uh. Dan, Susan, or Tim, what, what are your thoughts on this issue?
Well, I, you know, I have listened to the public comment. I didn't hear everybody's comments because, you know, some of this stuff was shut, shut down, but. There was no room in this St. Croix County ordinance to, uh. Make it smaller. It just was so emblanquished that. I'm, I'm for going forward and letting them know that we are gonna listen to the people. Um. I say we go forward.
Dan or Tim?
Yeah, I, I guess my comment on it is that, uh. Um, you know, I, I like the general idea that it's, it's, uh, expressing, you know, the opposition to. Um, you know, what's being done. I, I, I wonder if, uh. Because it refers to the ordinance, you know, that if they change it, you know, does it address really that? But I think. It sends a message clear enough that, uh, you know, the general direction is not, uh, you know, within the sentiment of, of. Well, I would say probably the majority of, of, of people in the town of Hudson for sure, in my mind, from what the people I've talked to. So, I would support it.
Tim?
I'm in favor of it. I, I'm concerned only, Don, that in the, in the agenda doesn't say anything about decision. Even it, and I don't know if that makes any difference. All it says is Marion Shaw's presentation on county disease ordinance.
Yep, no, I, I think. I think we can move ahead with that tonight.
Okay, then I'm in favor of it. Get Vicky to put it together and you and her sign it and send it in.
Does someone wanna make a motion to that so we could get it to the floor?
I would make a motion to support Marion Shaw's presentation and support, um. Fill out this resolution to oppose St. Croix County's, uh, ordinance by making. The HHS director, an unelected official. Um, I, I wanna oppose this ordinance.
You need to slow down, Ken, and state it again.
I wanna make a motion and support a Marion Shaw's presentation.
I have that and fill out the resolution. Then what?
And I, I wanna create this resolution in opposition to St. Croix County Board's HHS.
Hang on. St. Croix County HHS ordinance.
County, county disease ordinance.
County disease ordinance. Okay.
Communicable disease ordinance, actually.
That is correct.
Second.
Communicable. Communicable disease.
That's correct.
That's what you wanted to say now?
Ken, may I add that you missed unelected official?
Um, yeah, I put that, but I didn't know how to word it. I, I am not in favor of an unelected official. Um, enacting this.
Well, is that part of the, is that part of the resolution or not? Because those are separate things.
Resolution, the resolution's gonna state all that, so just keep, keep it with what I had.
Right.
Right, so, so Ken, if you'd be willing, in, in your motion for Vicky, just to say. That, that follows the template of the town of Saint Joseph, which is, follows the same template. And direct the clerk to make the changes and the, and the chairman to sign it and have it sent in. I, I think that would cover all the bases we've talked about.
That sounds good.
So, what do you want?
And I agree with that.
I mean, so you want, so you're in support of Marion Shaw's presentation? And the town of Saint Joe ordinance or what?
Resolution, resolution.
Resolution, I mean.
Yeah, the, the town of Saint Joe resolution, Vicky, that, that Marion sent on.
Alright, so, motion to support the Marion Shaw's presentation and the town of Saint Joe resol- resolution. In opposition to St. Croix County Health and Human Services, county communicable disease ordinance.
Period.
Period, yeah, correct. The ord- the resolution has everything in it, so.
Okay, then.
The resolution. The resolution should be changed to reflect the town of Hudson and St. Croix County.
Right, we'll put ours, but
Yep.
You, you want that in the motion too?
No.
All right.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, Ken made the second.
I second.
You second it?
Yeah.
Okay, then for discussion, then I think, what, what I'm hearing is, Tim, based on yours, then Vicky can take, take the same language, the, the same document that the town of St. Joe has done, change it to the town of Hudson. When it's ready, I can sign it. We can have it sent on and I think we've, we've covered our bases.
Yes.
Is there further discussion on this among board members?
Um, hi, I'm Michelle Dennison and I live in the town of Hudson. And when you guys pass that, could you possibly just, um, could you read uh, out loud again what it is that you have just, um, what you're just voting on?
Yeah, that, that would be good.
You don't want to hear the whole resolution, do you?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, but just the motion.
Yes.
Let, let me try and do it based on what I have right in front of me. Because this is a resolution from the town of St. Joseph. Our numbers will be, be different, but their resolution is number 2020-10. And it's, and the, and the header or the title is a resolution declaring the town of St. Joseph, and ours would be the town of Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin, opposition to the St. Croix County, Wisconsin, proposed communicable disease ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, there's been a motion.
Where she, just so you know, it goes through several wherethes, which included a lot of Marion's presentation. Down at the bottom, it says now they're, we have resolved that the town of Hudson of supervisors of St. Croix County, Wisconsin hereby declare that the town of Hudson, St. Croix County to be in opposition to the proposed St. Croix County Health and Human Services communicable disease, communicable disease ordinance. So it ends up just saying that we're absolutely opposed to it.
And is it possible that, um, one of the board members can read it at the county meeting? Because if it's just mailed in, we're afraid they might just ignore it. So if somebody from the county or from our town of Hudson could possibly read it at a meeting, that would be wonderful.
I, I can't make you that promise tonight, but we could, we can see who might be willing to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, as I said, within reason, any other questions, any other comments or discussion amongst the board members? There's been a motion.
Only comment I would make, Don, if you make that happen, I'd be willing to read it.
You'd be willing to read it?
Board meeting. Yep, I would.
Okay, well, when, whenever we have it ready for me to sign, I'll sign it. If you're willing to read it, then, then we're, then we've got a plan in place.
You can't, Tim. The board meeting's the same day as the election.
Oh, shoot. Okay, sorry. I can't.
Yeah, and I know Ken and I are going to be out of town.
It's, it's, it's 9:00 AM.
I start work at six.
Yeah, no.
Six in the morning and I don't get done till probably.
He's working.
No, I.
Do not leave him to go to the county.
No, I'm, uh, sorry. I know that.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion amongst the board members? All right, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, the motion's carried. Marion, thank you for your presentation and how succinct you were tonight.
Thank you, uh, very much, everybody. We, we appreciate it as, as your town fellow folks.
Very good. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, all right. I said we would have an abbreviated meeting tonight. Uh, any other items for future agendas? We, we know that the Indigo Pines will be on the, hopefully on the December agenda. Uh, we've talked about roads and snow. Any, any other thing from the board members that we should be looking at discussing?
We should, we should talk about a working session for comp plan. And I'd like to, in that discussion, at that working session also, just discuss Airbnb. Remember when we met with Robson, Don, we told him we'd look at that? I, I think Vicky did some quick checking with the city. Well, I didn't think she'd have time. We as a board need to discuss that. At one point, just so the board understands, we decided that Airbnbs weren't something that we wanted in the town of Hudson. But that's a different town, town board representatives. We should discuss that as the current town board representatives and make a decision on that.
Well, maybe we could do, when everything settles here with the election and the, and the, uh, budget hearing and so on, we should schedule a working session on that and, and take a look at it.
Yeah, and I, I bring something up also on that. So we have, uh, you know, the Carmichael Corridor there in which, uh, we've got commercial development on the west side. And, uh, ultimately, we're going to have commercial development on the east side. And I'm just wondering if, uh, because we're backing up to a neighborhood, there's a lot of neighborhood in there. You know, uh, is it possible even to come up with a, um, maybe a, a, a different zoning classification even? That would be like office commercial or something like that, that would be very light and, uh, you know, less, less impactful on the, uh, on, on the residential neighborhoods.
Well, let's keep that as a future.
Where are you talking?
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the east side of Carmichael Road.
The church in that neighborhood, south?
Yep, yeah. So in other words, if, uh, if the, uh, if that could be limited to a more of a office commercial, uh, situation rather than.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's ever going to be town of Hudson.
What's that?
I think that's going to be city when it happens.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. And that's, that's.
You know what I mean? And we've said that from the, from the original compound back in 1988. We didn't think any of that stuff would ever stay in the town of Hudson, including Atwoods, which is now part of the city, you know?
Right, yes.
It's just too valuable a land to stay in the town.
Well, let's.
I, I, I don't have any problem with what you want to discuss, but I don't think it's going to matter. Sorry.
Okay, any, any other comments from the board? All right, everyone, we always stayed safe tonight. We kept COVID at bay and we certainly social distanced, so. Hearing done, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Awesome. Okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone who joined us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.